This is the special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, Kellie, Coches, and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, October 30th, 2018. At 6:00 PM, the Coches County Board of Supervisors. Here in the room located at 1415 Malloway Lane, this is the building G Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornado, please call the roll.
Councilmember Anna Quinn, here. Councilmember Joe Hansen, here. Councilmember Frank Davis, she's with us.
Here.
Vehicle. Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor Tim Douglas Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Kate Lindstrom.
Here.
City scout Robert Smith, city manager, Ashley Cornado, city clerk. Dwayne Wallace, operations manager. Albert Chubb, police chief. George Castillo, fire chief. Aldo Duno, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. This, uh, I called a special meeting for the purpose of one item, and that item is discussion and possible approval of ordinance 018-09, authorizing assailant transfer of city property located near 429D as of David Longtree Hill. Paul Esparra, Mr. Esparza, planning manager, sir?
Mayor and City Council, before he was an application for a transfer of city property. Let me walk you through this, um, the Planning Zoning Commission, they first heard this on May 18th, and what's being considered, and I'll use the way the pointer here, so the parcel that's outlined in red, uh, is a city-owned parcel, 480 square feet. Uh, so the portion that's colored in blue is the portion that's being requested by the applicant, Mr. Sky. Um, there is a smaller portion back here, 150 square feet, that was being proposed to be retained by the city. This did, like I said, this went to the Planning Zoning Commission, um, in, in May of this year, and they did make a recommendation. And since that time, uh, there has been a finding, and it was sent back to the Planning Commission. This property right here at 19F was sold, it was owned by this person here. So what has happened is there was a possible, this property's also owned, the Humphreys own this as well as this parcel here. So was this selling, they used to own this as well, so this is gonna create a, intentionally land block, the Humphreys parcel, they, this is a parking area, it allows them to access back onto, onto Longtree Hill Street. So this went before the Planning Zoning Commission, just recently in September, and they did deliberate this, and did review that, and took that into consideration. Um, they did, uh, forward a, a recommendation, uh, once again, to the City Council. It was three to two, and there was one extension that was in favor of that, again, to, uh, transfer the 330 square feet, and the city would retain the 150 square feet here, so it would allow the Humphreys to, uh, maintain access out to Longtree Hill Street. Uh, here's, uh, an area, this is based on Google, this probably goes back to about, I think it's about 2015, but these are the parcels that Mr. Sky currently owns, considering the whole structure that was there. So again, I, I color-coded, this is the parcel right here that is currently owned by the city. Of course, I color-shaded the, the blue, uh, is the portion that's being requested, and this is the portion that would, um, be retained by the city. Of course, here's the one on Longtree Hill, by the way. So let me walk the, um, so again, and I kinda touched on this, but, um, so I, I touched on what, why the reason had to come back, and of course, Mr. Sky was requesting this to create parking. Uh, there's no specific designated parking, uh, for the structure that he's building on Longtree Hill, most of the residents have designated parking. So again, he has requested that the council consider this request, so he could create parking for the structure that he is currently building. Of course, the, the article 2.6.9 does require that the PNC does make a recommendation on this matter, and, and does make a recommendation, uh, to the City Council. And again, because of the size of this, it's, it's a small size, if it fall under the threshold where it could be, if they deem that there was, um, historically parking on, on the site, that the, the city could, uh, transfer directly to Mr. Sky without having to go out to auction and quote bidding requirements. Um, of course, public comments, uh, were received, uh, did notify initially all of the property owners within 300 feet before it went up to the Planning Zoning Commission. That did allow people that wanted to solicit, uh, any comments, uh, to the Planning Commission, they could do so. And at the time, I did mention, uh, Mr. Laird did provide, uh, some comments, uh, his family does own a home on, on Longtree Hill, so the comments were quite, I know he addressed, and addressed the commission. Um, of course, the fire department, that came up, Planning Zoning Commission, we wanted to get some input from the fire department, understand the fire department has, uh, generated technical report, and allow them to address that regarding fire hydrants. I knew that there was a fire hydrant located between the Humphreys and the home that's being constructed by Mr. Sky, that was, uh, called into question as far as that location, but I knew the fire department can certainly address, uh, what they've come up with as far as recommendations for that. As far as the property valuation, uh, what I had done is I contacted local realtor, Visby Realty, and, and just solicited their opinion about, uh, describe the situation of the property, and what they would, uh, value that, and that came back at $2.50 to $3.00 per square foot. I also understand, based on what the city's done in the past, and talking to Mr. Ward, that certainly the property has transferred at $3.00 per square foot, so this has been done before, it's consistent with what's been done in the past. Uh, as I mentioned, the Planning Zoning Commission did forward a recommendation, uh, for transferring this property, uh, at $3.00 per square foot for that portion that's being requested. I've got some exhibits now, these will be really helpful, so I wanted to make sure that, um, so here's the current structure that's there now. So what I'm showing here is, um, this is the existing gray, is the existing Longtree Hill right of way. The section in red and blue is the current parcel, although what I've attempted to do here is the red portion is the portion that's retained, the portion in blue is the portion that's being requested, dismiss all property on this side, Humphreys own property on this side, so if you were to draw a line right about there, um, Miss Eaton, Eaton owns the property here. So I've got a couple of, uh, here's one showing, um, a vehicle that's parked in that space where the Humphreys would park the vehicle, and of course, this area would show that we can access that. Here's another angle too, I thought this would be helpful as well, to see this. So again, the area in blue and red would be, um, the parcel, and of course, the right of way, of course, uh, if this remains, you know, this certainly would all be, so I had another tip that'll show it, but of course, the Humphreys property is located right here, so that's another angle. And then, what I've done here is I took an even closer view, and, and again, the portion that's being requested is here, and I brought the entire gray up to the area to include the area that would be retained by the city, to just demonstrate, uh, that that would remain, that would be the recommendation, of course, with the Smith and Humphrey property on either side. Um, and of course, just other photos I've been in on, on Longtree Hill on other occasions, so I have, I have that. But certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions, um, regarding the request, and certainly I'm able to go back, and if, if, if these exhibits, uh, if you're wanting to look at some of these exhibits, just please let me know, I can go back to that. But again, hopefully this is helpful for the council, be able to see what the situation is on the ground.
Uh, my question is, uh, you chose Bisbee really, and the reason, was there a reason for that?
You know, honestly, Mayor, I, I grabbed a local phone book, and I, I went to the realtor page, and I basically just chose Bisbee Realty. I was looking for a local realtor, so there was nothing to that other than I, I chose them, and of course, I didn't solicit any commentary from anyone else regarding that, I did that on my own.
Thank you, sir. Council, any questions right now of, uh, Mr. Esparza?
I've got a quick question. So basically, what we're talking here is just take parking space, correct?
That's what the intention is, to utilize that for a parking space. And again, like I said, it is, it's a city parcel, not part of the right of way, but that's, that's, that was the intent of the request, is to establish parking for the residents that's under construction.
Okay, and there's no other parking available around it, or anything else?
My understanding, most of that is under private ownership, so again, uh, I, I don't know how far you would have to go back up Longtree Hill to find parking that's not encumbered by someone's, you know, personal property. But my understanding is the other, it'd be hard to rest to find available space there if it wasn't there.
Would it be, uh, appropriate to get the fire department to, uh, discuss their, their findings, if, uh, the fire marshal, and the chief, or the, whoever's?
And Mayor, there's also, I, I do have a photo, it shows the hydrants, if you want, I, I can advance to it, that's helpful.
Okay, that'd be great.
Um, I just didn't make that part of the overall presentation, but I kept the photo in there just in case. Um, but I think, we'll start it.
Eric, yes, sir. Thank you. Chief. I'm, uh...
This is, uh, Council. Um, unfortunately, we don't, we don't have the power pump, but we do have some pictures to describe our, our concerns, our, our findings, and, uh, we decided to admit that area safer for fire protection, and, and watch it in case there's a fire in the neighborhood. Do you wanna... If you'd like, I have to read the, the report I came with, I think you have made, um, you got it?
It's in our, yes, yes.
Do you want me to go through it?
Lieutenant, it's in our, it's in our packet. Um, but, uh, I think when the audience may not, you know, have seen that, so, why don't you, if you don't mind, uh, go ahead, go ahead and read it.
I'm the fire marshal, General Rupen, I apologize. This letter is, uh, is regarding, you're requested to review the fire hydrant location on Longtree Hill. Well, Fire Chief Castillo and myself have determined that the hydrant is obstructed, and would not be accessible in the event of a fire, at either structure near the hydrant. So, in the picture, you can tell, if there's a fire on either side, or either one of those are on fire, there'd be no way for us to, to gain access, to even hook up the hose, This clearly poses a present danger to all residents and structures in the immediate area. From the fire department's strategic and tactical standpoint, this hydrant serves no viable resource during fire suppression efforts. For the 2012 International Fire Code adopted by the City of Bisbee. Chapter 5, Section 507, Fire Protection Water Supplies, 507-5.4 obstruction. Non-obstructed access to fire hydrants shall be maintained at all times. The fire department shall not be deterred or hindered from gaining immediate access to fire protection equipment or hydrants. And here, there's an obvious obstruction. The parking spaces there, go right up to the corner of the house, and it's an obvious obstruction. I don't read the other, it just talks about clear spaces around the hydrants, and, uh, if we do move the hydrant, it, it should have barriers to protect it from traffic. So due to the close proximity of the structures and the parking spaces, it is our opinion, based on our observations, as well as the International Fire Code, that this fire hydrant meets all criteria to justify the allocation of an additional fire hydrant. Therefore, Chief Castillo and I believe that the most appropriate location for the hydrant, to best serve the needs of the fire department and the surrounding residents, in order to enhance life safety in our community and firefighters, shown in the photographs provided. And I do have, um, some pictures, I don't have a power point, so you apologize. Do you guys have the pictures?
We do, we do, thank you.
So, if you guys have any questions on our findings, I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to thank you, first of all, for, for going in, for preparing the findings, I certainly appreciate the fact that it was done with current, uh, mind, and, uh, the safety of the community, as, as we discussed. Uh, anybody in the council have any questions of the fire marshal or the chief?
Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I wonder if Paul can pull up with his photos, and allow, um, the gentleman to show where the recommended fire hydrant should go, so they don't have their photos.
The one you just had there, probably.
There, no, is that far enough?
It's just, it's just the, uh, that area over there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe point off there.
I believe it's approximately right there on this, this curve, there's a little fence in this, that's, that's the proposed site for the, for an additional hydrant, so, um, I'm not aware of who owns the property, or the city owns it, it's right on, right on that little curve. Do you guys got this photo?
We do.
I forgot I wanted to, to go over the recommendations.
Any questions of, uh, this, this line?
Um, okay, so, with the proposed, the additional hydrant, would you remove the current one, or would you just leave it there just to have?
No, I'm just gonna be there, just in case there's fire coming in from below, or any of the other structures that are in the area. More hydrants are better for us, so.
Okay.
We, we believe another hydrant used to be in that area, but our recommendation is to keep that one there as well, just in case a fire breaks down below the hill. There is a couple, uh, abandoned structures down the stairway from there, and that hydrant can be utilized as an extra water supply in emergency situations.
That was just my concern, though.
Any other questions, the council? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lieutenant, appreciate it, guys.
Paul, January 11th of law school, just a little busy, so...
I'll do it, I'll do it. All right. Uh, Mr. Wallace?
Just to continue with the fire department, I did a cost estimate based on the locations, uh, at the high end, $5,000, and that's using a lot of parts we already have in stock for, uh, fire, and we already have new hydrants in stock, we have some pipe in videos, um, material labors, we could add an additional hydrant in that location for around $5,000. And we have money budgeted, um, in the fire suppression system to do, uh, additional items.
Thank you, sir. I think we can move along, uh, we have, uh, three speakers, uh, and, uh, Brian Laird, your first, if you'll welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council members, thank you for your time. Um, my name is Brian Laird, I'm a chairman, I live in Tucson, Arizona. My parents own a home that's less than 100 feet away from this new structure, so if you're looking at the picture up there, our place is just to the left downstairs. The Humphreys' house is the green one, ours is the next one over. Um, the background of this, uh, is that Mr. Sky, and I've, I've been through this before at other hearings, so maybe some of you already have heard this, and I apologize for taking your time and going over it again, it's important. Um, but the background of this is that Mr. Sky came into the neighborhood up here, there was an old home that was there, uh, that had, was admittedly very rundown. Mr. Sky, who's now a member of the Design Review Board, applied for a permit to remodel the existing structure, and publicly noticed, was sent out to the neighbors, and it said that Mr. Sky was going to add on to the south of the existing house. What you're looking at here is the north edge of Mr. Sky's property, okay? So he gives the wall of his home, that's very near the north edge of his property. The existing house, the old, very small, quaint little house that was there, was 17 feet further back than where that structure is that you're looking at. So that wall that you're looking at, the old home, was 17 feet further south, and Mr. Sky, in his application, and we neighbors, in the notices that were sent out, we received notice that he was going to add on to the south, not to the north. What Mr. Sky, and I'll emphasize again, Mr. Sky was a appointed member of the Design Review Board. What Mr. Sky then did was he went out, and without applying for a demolition permit, and without applying for a new construction permit, he tore down that little old house that was there, and instead of building to the south of where it was, away from the neighborhood, and away from the fire hydrant, and away from the street, he built to the north, past the fire hydrant, toward the street, into the area where people who come to visit the neighborhood park, okay? He did all of that without going and applying for any permit, and he was allowed to do that. And there's a real issue, and there's a real problem with that, because the city inspector, Mr. Ward, was there, was present, and understood that that was happening. And your vote today is a very important point in time in this controversy. This is basically the last chance to turn this ship around, and stop from the course that it's on. And the course that it's on is that it's gonna be a lawsuit, and it's gonna be what's called a mandamus action. And under the mandamus action, if a person is forced to come in and make the city officials obey the law by filing a lawsuit, at the end of that case, if the plaintiff is, is successful, the judge is required to, uh, not only award all the costs, expenses of things like engineers, experts, but also the attorney's fees. And those cases can cost cities hundreds of thousands of dollars. And your vote today is an important vote, so I really want you to think about it, and I really hope that what you're gonna do is you're gonna recognize that what Mr. Sky did was he intentionally, he deliberately built to the north, in an area he was not permitted and allowed to build in, and in so doing, built this structure on top of the area where he could have his parking spaces, on his property that he owns, okay? And at the, at the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission hearing, I spoke to the commissioners, and I, and I told them, in addition to not applying for demolition permit, not applying for a new, uh, construction permit, Mr. Sky did not, uh, ever submit a site plan to scale, uh, showing where parking would be. That's a requirement, and the statute is Bisbee zoning code 3.5.2, subsection B, subsection 3. And one of the commissioners, one of the two brave commissioners that voted against approval and, uh, objected, asked Mr. Sky, "Did you submit a site plan?" What was that that Mr. Laird said about a site plan? And Mr. Sky wouldn't answer the question. What he said was, "I submitted everything the city required." Well, Mr. Sky never submitted a site plan showing parking, and that's why we're here today arguing about whether the city should give him parking, and pity for a new fire hydrant for him, because he chose to build in an area where he had not obtained a permit to build. And without notice of us, we never received notice that he was building to the north. We never received notice that he was demolishing the old building, and we never received notice that he was going to build this new building. And I'll just tell you one last thing, and that is, if you look at the historic district design guidelines, that building is specifically, you look at the pictures in there, the drawings that say yes and no, that's under no. And why that's been allowed to happen by a member of the Design Review Board, and why he continues to be allowed to do this kind of thing is a real problem, and it's not gonna get better unless you turn this ship around, and that's today, that's the opportunity. And I thank you for your time.
I have your questions.
I apologize if I'm a little worked up about it, but this is pretty important to those of us who live in the neighborhood.
You would normally have three minutes, and I understand why it is important, and that's why I gave you the lead.
I very much appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the courtesy.
I, I want to, uh, make some records clear, just so that you would know, if you check the dates, uh, Mr. Sky was not a member of the Design Review Board, when most of the have to, you're speaking up to the events.
I understand that. He's a member of the...
And with, with due respect, made a very closing argument, but, and I, and I wanna, I just wanna make sure that I understand that you're indicating to us, to none, that should we vote to provide John Sky the parking, and we'll be filing suit against the City of Bisbee? If I'm telling you, you're telling me.
What I'm telling you is that this is the time, this is the vote, when you can, uh, turn that around and start making that now.
Well, I certainly, I certainly understand, yes. I'm asking you a, you know, I, you, I, I'm getting a, we're, I, I can't help considering and feel that I'm being threatened for my vote, and, and I, and I don't think that that's appropriate.
I, I can't help but stand up here and say that the reason that I went to law school was so that if somebody was doing something wrong, and they were repeatedly getting away with it, and particularly if, uh, public officials, um, such as the zoning inspector, were allowing them to do this kind of thing, that I was going to stand up, and I was going to fight against that, and I'm not going to be ashamed of that, okay? And it's not...
Not, not normally going to be verbally smart against you, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is it written statute, is it statute...
It's the statute, thanks.
All right. Please, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, putting aside a couple of the motions, I represent the Humphreys. Uh, if you look at the map here, up here, the Humphreys are the home, it's to the left of the Sky structure. And to, to help out my, my colleague, um, understanding, he's not gonna stay there and make threats to you. Okay, that's not what we do as lawyers. Just wanna make sure you're clear on this. We, we don't do that. He would've done simply to notice a fire, and then moved forward from that point. So it, it's not about threatening anyone. No one's gonna threaten anyone in the council or the city, just make that clear. What this is about more interestingly, though, is about, and as I said to the, the group at the, at the Planning and Zoning, was paint yourself a big corner, and, and that's what's happened here. And I'd ask Paul if you don't mind, could you put on the aerial photo, since you don't have the 1980 version we looked at before, back in the PNC? If you could look at the structure in yellow at the top, that's the old structure, and you can see the difference between where the blue ends, and where the house begins. And you can see the difference between where the blue ends and where the house begins. That's the area of parking. That's now gone because the structure now extends all the way to the blue. So if you can see it, the structure extend, this structure that was oriented, what would you say? East-west is now north-south or northeast-southeast. I always get confused in Bisbee, so forgive me. But now the orientation of the building is right to the property line, right to the city property boundary. That's where the structure is now. There is no concept, please go back to the previous picture. There's no concept of parking in the development by Mr. Sky of this structure. If he had, the bottom floor would be the garage. He would just simply pull right through the city property into his garage at the lower level. But instead, he's built a two-story structure, several thousand square feet, that extends to the property line. My clients live to the left. My clients are stuck. Can I get the picture with the vehicle? At the Planning and Zoning meeting, Mr. Sky was generous enough to offer the red area as part of the city parcel that he was no longer seeking. And he was going to do that because that was a thirty-two, correct if I'm wrong on this, John. It was a thirty-two-foot-long property, and he was going to not claim the first ten feet, that's the red. And therefore, lifebuys the Humphreys could make their turn into his property. Well, there's several problems with that. Number one, it's not a room. If I grab my dad's old ninety-eight, there's no freaking way you would make that turn, okay? I can go into prison, but I can't do it in that, and there's no way. So what do these people want? They wanted the parking that was established for them by record. And if you look at the plot maps, you can see the parking that was there and established. Parking for that parcel where that structure is of Mr. Sky's was not established. Why? Because he had parking on the property. Now, why is this a city parcel unto its own? I have no idea. I've been practicing law in Cochise County forever, I've lived here since 1970. If you ask me to explain Bisbee and how streets and steps and everything else work, the only thing I can tell you is I can throw three surveyors out there and they'll welcome their own opinions, and they'll never be right. But it's fine. That's what we live in, that's our affected community, we appreciate it. But in this instance, it's fine. Now, I got to be honest with you. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, I did not hear from the fire chief. I didn't hear from the fire marshal. I don't know if they weren't invited or it didn't appear. But I have to tell you, I'm genuinely concerned. You saw a photograph, I don't know if it's still available, but maybe there's not a photograph of where the fire hydrant is. But the gentleman from the fire department made it very clear, "This is a fire hazard." I think I actually wrote the phrase down. "This is a problem because it's a life safety of the people around and the firefighters who would have to fight it." In other words, this is premature. You cannot be giving away city property to anyone if we've got an issue of life and life safety. Now, I did hear from others that there's money, there's the prospect of getting the new fire hydrant further to the north, and that's going to be set. Fine, when that's done, do this. Because until then, you can't ensure the life of anyone on Laundrie Hill based on giving away access and what would ultimately be the blockade of the only fire hydrant in existence. Time is not your enemy, it's your ally. At this point, simply put everything on hold, let. Mr. Sky is still building, nobody's stopping that. He's still doing everything that the city has allowed him to do. Don't get me wrong, I agree with Mr. Laird, I think what was happening is a sham, but that's a side issue, that's not my issue. My issue is you've got a hell of a lot more residents on Laundrie Hill other than these two people right here. And you can't go out there and say, "Okay, fine, we're going to give away that property, park which you have to park there, we don't care, and we're done." I think you can simply put this on hold and say, "We're going to wait. We're going to wait until the gentleman who advised it said, 'Let's get the new fire hydrant established.'" What is that, a hundred, two-hundred feet up the street, something like that? They identified it. The money's available, it's going to be available, let's get it done. Get that done. Until then, what? We ignore the advice of your own fire chief and your own fire marshal who say, "Lives are in danger, firefighters' lives are in danger." No, we're not going to do that. Now, should this have been thought of earlier? Yes, should it have been thought of at the Design Review? Should it have been thought of when they were sitting there going, "Hey, what's with this big fire hydrant right here?" Should that have been thought of then? Yes. But you're the last stop. It doesn't get past you. You can say, "Brakes. Let's get infrastructure in place first, and then we'll approve sale property and development, and that's it." I understand my time's limited, but I have to express to you concern to my client. They're concerned with the house, concerned with the structure, they get it. No one in the city at this point is going to say, "Tear it down, start over. You violated every precept we ever had in the concept of maintaining our history and everything we were going to build in the same way as we, you know, you take it, you build it, you build it, you fix it, and so forth." No, no, tear it down and start new, that's what happened here. Okay, we get it. Way too costly for Mr. Sky to absorb that. Yes, Design Review gave it to him, yes, PNC gave it to him, whatever. Mistakes are mistakes. The buck stops here. We have a chance to take a moment and say, "Let's take a lap, relax, or you get the infrastructure in, then we'll do these things." Now, I will tell you this. I do appreciate Mr. Sky's assistance today. We were out there today with surveyors, we were out there today with Mr. Sky, and we identified, "How can my client get access?" Because as Mr. Laird said, and I'm not going to threaten you with a lawsuit, but you know, frankly, a man like my client, notice a claim's coming in the mail. Okay, I don't have a choice. My client can't lose their asset. So we negotiated getting some access into this property. We can do that. There's a chance for people to work things out. But you just can't shove them into a corner. And quite frankly, that's how the Lairds feel, that's how the Humphreys feel. They're being shoved into a corner, like this rush to get this property there. I mean, don't get me wrong, I appreciate the special meetings. I don't want to sit through, you know, another agenda I actually have in a regular meeting, so I appreciate that. But this is the time to work this out. But how do you do that? You can't give away this property without evaluating the issue of the fire and getting the fire hydrant set. So what do you do? My recommendation is you say, "Okay, we're going to table this issue, we're going to get on the agenda and on the budget the fire hydrant for the other fire hydrant on Laundrie Hill, and then at that point, we'll come back here and we'll knock out the deed, talk to me, talk to the Humphreys, we'll pay, we've got our surveyors paying for it. They'll do the legal descriptions of the whole nine yards to get all of this done." You don't realize it. To get a line between those two buildings requires busting up, I think, John, you said, busting up concrete. You've got to get concrete busted up. It's got to come right through that R.O.W. It's got to come up the hill and get that next one set. This is not the time to start giving property away. This is the time to say, "Okay, let's get these set, and we'll vote from there." And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have a question.
Sure.
You provided an exhibit book on it.
Thank you.
And is this your agreement with Mr. Sky as of today, barring the fire hydrant?
Okay, so let me throw it at you real quick. Mr. Sky asked me the same question. "Bob, can we just verbally agree on this?" I go, "I'm a real estate lawyer. We don't verbally agree on anything that's real estate. Everything has to go in writing." But what I did talk to him about was the concept of having, as you see the pot, there's, all right, if you can help me out on this. If you look at the left side closest to us of the blue corner, right? You see where the A and A and P N is? Over the left is a blue corner, about where the right rear tire is of that car, right? You take four feet to the right and fourteen feet to a corner where it's probably close to where the right front tire is. We were trying to create a triangle to help my clients get in. What would happen is, and I'm, John, right if I'm wrong, the concept would be you would convey at some point in the future, once these are done, the city parcel to Mr. Sky, but you would preserve to the Humphreys that easement for Ingress English to get across it. That way, Mr. Sky, who's the owner of that parcel, couldn't construct, you know, a big garage right here, my clients could never get into their property. That would be impossible. So, yes, and I appreciate Mr. Sky's agreement, discussion, his forthrightness. I really appreciate everything he was doing with us today. And we met out there at my client's expense with the surveyors. So what you're seeing is the draft from Alta Survey, who is more than prepared, and they weren't prepared today because quite frankly, with a few hours before the meeting, they weren't prepared to draft a legal description. So they can do that, but that's something in the future. As I said, my suggestion is resolve the other issues. And we'll come forward and we'll give you the legal description to resolve that.
Then why would this body not vote to provide the, to sell the property with the caveat that this be memorialized in legal description and that a certificate of occupancy not be issued on the home until the fire hydrant's set?
Fine.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
No, you called it, Mr. Sky, I totally found that. You limit the certificate of occupancy, the ability to utilize this property and create more victims to a fire. Yes, limit that. But the bottom line is, if I were in your shoes, and I know you're not, because I'm elected, you're much more popular than I am, I would say, "Table it." There's no rush. Why do you have to put title in this name now under all these conditions without getting the assistance of the city attorney and others who can help you draft a legal description and those conditions? But I don't disagree with you. I think that's correct. I think there should be conditions limited. I just think you don't have to do it right this second. There's nothing that's preventing Mr. Sky, at least that I'm aware of, from continuing on in his construction ventures. So I don't quite see where the rush is. No one's cutting him off from parking his vehicles or anything else, so I don't see where that's happening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You have two more questions.
I appreciate that. Are there any other questions I can answer?
Counsel, if you have any questions, Mr. Statler.
Yeah, I guess, as high as I may here, I'm not, if you're good with that, I'm not sure what the point of postponement is.
I'm sorry?
If you're good with the agreement of, you know, I can see waiting for the fire chief for safety reasons. And you're saying you're good with that, with the skies, and we're here to stay, of course, but with the agreement on cutting the parcel, I don't know why they're putting it in the way.
Well, at this point, because we take the council's word, and at this point, we don't have a legal description of what I just described. I was really enjoying our conversation with Mr. Sky and myself and the Alta surveyors, but I don't have a legal description for it. So I can't tell you what to put into a resolution other than to be determined later. And I don't know that the council wants to have that indebtedness in its motion. That's what I'm suggesting. If you want to put a timeframe on it, whether it's now, a month from now, six months from now, and you haven't discussed with me, and I don't know your budget, frankly, I don't know what the timing is on putting in or whose approvals you need to obtain to get the next fire hydrant.
That's on our side, so we'll worry about it.
Well, I mean, maybe at some point, because somebody's going to see saying, "That's my property, what did you want, a fire hydrant?" Yeah, right. So, I mean, truthfully, I appreciate your recognition that that's an issue because frankly, when I listen to the marshal and the chief saying, "This could cost lives," that's the one that rings my bell. So I hope that answers your question.
And that's why we thought of you in the first place.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Happy evening.
Mr. Sky.
Hello.
Welcome.
My name's John Sky, I'm the owner and builder at 429 E Laundrie Hill. I just wanted to go over a little history of the hill first. First, in 1997, that parking space at the Humphreys' home was sold to Helen Davis from the city. That was a city parcel as well, and that one was directly in front of the fire hydrant. The other thing that was mentioned was that I painted myself in a corner. And really, it wasn't I that painted myself in a corner, it was the Humphreys. When I constructed that wall, prior to constructing it, I dug enough earth and rock out up to the house to leave a two-foot walkway and make it so we could park three cars in there. And I actually pulled three cars in there because I was all proud of it and tried to talk her into letting us construct it that way so there would be more parking up there. She said that's not what she wanted, and she had me build the wall eight feet out. So that's what I did. She built it over the city parking spot that was later on sold to Helen Davis. Eadman's property was also city property. I have all the records and stuff. I know that you've gotten emails from Rodney Smith. He's the one that orchestrated this whole thing up there because all the property lines were all mangled, there was a lot of issues over parking. This isn't a new thing, there was parking signs everywhere up there. Everybody was fighting over parking, so this was his solution. The city parcel that I'm asking to purchase was in fact directly in front of Kit Hendricks's house. She had mental health problems. She wasn't interested in owning a property, she stated such. Everything moved on without her. Every single house on Laundrie Hill has two or more parking spaces. That's the current situation out there, except for this one. See, yeah, and as Bob said earlier, the surveyors didn't have enough time to put down the property description. I had no problems making a little legal easement for them. I never did. I'd like to go back to history again to tell you the story about me and the Humphreys and Rodney Smith getting along. And initially, what we had talked about doing was me buying this city parcel, and then what I had said I wanted to do with them was to measure the circumference from their wall to that pole and then divide the property equally between all three of us because the parcel in the middle is slightly larger than both of their properties. And then we were going to go in together and we were going to build covered parking. And what I've tried to convey to Mr. Central today is that I would like to get back to that, you know, where we were in the beginning, where we were getting along, we were going to build covered parking and stuff like that. So of course... So of course, I have no problems with giving the little slipper of easement. It really doesn't matter because the, you can't build a garage on this property because there's not enough property to do it according to the city building codes. That wasn't an accident. So you don't have to worry about anything being built because you can't legally build something there. With all three of us together, we could definitely put covered parking and all that. In the corner, another little history thing, they changed the city easement. The city easement, the walkway, used to go straight through the houses, around the Humphreys' house, and down the stairs, down towards Circle K. So back in the day, Ms. Ingram and David Laird and Helen Davis came together and asked the city if they could change the easement to go back behind Janet Eaton's property and in between the Laird's two-car garage and Janet Eaton's house, which was someone else I could find out. So at any rate, so that's where the, and they did this so Helen Davis could build a deck that pushes out in front of, it's the Humphreys' front porch at this point. Yeah, so the other thing that I'd like to let you guys know about is, in the beginning, when I bought this property, Rodney Smith owned from about where that truck is forward and owned half of the existing house. So when I bought the property, there was already major property issues. I worked with him to try to fix the property lines. I ended up buying back to the existing wall that began the front yard and I built up to there. It's true, I made a mistake and wrote south instead of north. That was all gone through in the designer rebord meeting. And if you've listened to the, you know, the proceedings, then you could understand that that was all clarified and everything has been clarified there. I own the property to the stairs that the Humphreys would use for easement to their house. I told Bob today, I re-poured cement stairs there. I have no problem with giving them an easement to that property. I'm kind of bending over backwards even though I'm being attacked. And I'm just trying to, you know, I'm trying to smooth this whole thing over if I could maybe talk to them, I don't know. Yeah, so all this, oh, and then the other thing that I wanted to explain as well, because it keeps coming up, is I did have every intentions of fixing the existing structure that was there. Upon going through it with Joe Ward, he had me take off the, I got approved to take off the roof. I was already approved to do an addition. I asked him, should I take off the siding? Look what's in there? He said, yes. I took off the siding. He said that the framing was no good, it had to go. The, Kit Hendricks had cut open a huge part of the floor. She cut through all the joints and all that stuff, and they dug about a four-foot square pole under the house and built a stage. I couldn't keep the floor. There was some pre-existing beams that weren't in very good shape, and then the concrete was completely destroyed just from age. So I did take it apart a piece at a time. It's a full remodel, rebuild. It was never a, it was never a demolition, because that wasn't being intended, and that's why it didn't have to come before the board. And the other thing was is that I built it just as wide as the existing house. The existing house was in the same place as the fire hydrant now. It's no closer or further than it was. I did build back further, so it seems like it locked it in, which it did, but that wasn't anything I was thinking about at the time. Other than that, I'd just like to get this pushed through so I can keep moving forward. Me and the Humphreys have a lot of, a lot of things to go through in light of easements and little properties and a piece in my yard and this and that, which I think that we'll be able, I'll be able to work with Bob on, and I think that we'll be able to get that all worked out. As far as the property description, it's not a hard thing to do. And I know that we couldn't get the description today, but I, you know, I gave my word that I would do it, and I definitely will.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What we're looking at, I believe, is...
Can anyone else speak?
No, not without the inside of saying.
I didn't see a sign up sheet. Can I speak?
What is your home?
What is my what? I just have a...
Are you a property owner?
I am a property owner, yes.
On Laundry Hill?
Not on Laundry Hill.
Oh, yeah. Then I don't really see the purpose of that.
The purpose is to bring up a couple points that other people have missed, because I remember the old house.
Yeah, okay, I don't, let me, let me finish that.
Sure.
We are not here discussing the house. We are here discussing the parking spot.
Parking space, exactly. How does it do with it?
And we have a house. It's built, it's obvious that Mr. Laird is not happy with that house, but that's not what we're looking at. We're looking at the parking spot. Mr. Stachow has indicated that an agreement could be made regarding the parking spot, which we are here to discuss. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we move to adopt 018-09, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property to John Sky located at 429D Laundry Hill with a caveat that the concept provided here, which has actual figures on it, of four feet, and the property is not described by a survey, but nevertheless, I believe it's detailed enough that we can actually extrapolate and get a survey out of that. And the caveat that it be agreed upon, the easement and property be agreed upon, and that prior to the certificate of occupancy issued on the Sky property, that the fire hydrant be removed and be operational. That is my motion.
Excuse me, mayor. I think you have relocated to another, I think you were to keep the old...
Yes.
That the fire hydrant be, a fire hydrant be placed at the recommended site. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
I second that. Can you add some special?
Yep. That was it.
Mr. Stachow, you indicated in your report that without this parcel of land, that the property is landlocked.
Well, I was referring to, if I can, can you, I guess I can hear. The issue was that if the full city parcel went to Mr. Sky, it landlocked, the Humphreys' could not make access to Laundry Hill. That's why the red portion was being excluded and retained by the city. Does that answer your question?
I'm just going in terms of your staff analysis. I thought you were making reference to the Sky property being landlocked without this access.
No, it was the Humphreys'. This parcel, had this entire piece been transferred, would have been locked. That's why this piece would remain, the red portion would remain city property.
Paul, I'm going to ask you to hold the mic.
Okay.
Because it's being recorded and we're going to need it.
Thank you, sir.
The council would know that that did make sense, so yeah. So this, the entire, the entire red and blue section would have created a problem. That's why that has been reduced to just the blue, so it would allow this parcel to have direct access to Laundry Hill right away.
I read that differently, so I didn't continue. So you were talking about the Humphreys' property being landlocked without this, but...
Yeah. And I think if I can go back, if this might be helpful right here, then this will show it, because this is the Humphreys' parcel, and it's basically the full 32 feet. So you could see what had happened, had this entire piece gone to Sky. This parcel basically would get in right into the Eaton's. That's why pulling back a portion of it, so that way they can pull right out and back onto Laundry Hill right away.
Correct, I understand that. Did Mr. Sky have access to this property without, about this, transfer of this property? Is this property landlocked and accessible to his use without this, without this being his parcel?
I mean, this parcel is city-owned. It's been traditionally, it's been used for parking, so I guess technically, I mean, he can park right here and go back out. Does his, do his parcels technically touch Laundry Hill? No, because this city parcel's in between. But I don't think there's any restrictions on this parcel to prevent him from parking there now.
Well, except for, that's kind of how we got here to begin with, is if everybody, because there isn't a designated parking, then Mr. Sky or the Humphreys or anybody could load that up at parking spots and you would be landlocked. I mean, right now, yeah, like anybody on any given day, any time of the day could park here. I mean, they... And that's what we're trying to avoid.
Why wouldn't they, if that property is landlocked?
What? Either property could be, either property could be technically landlocked without a, 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 a reasonable transfer, yes. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Well, also in terms of the issue of the safety, certainly the safety issue is current. Certainly, the structure that was there was very unsafe, a fire trap, if you call it, and certainly was a danger to neighbors. And, and as has been pointed out here, the hydrant was extremely close to that property. The current property, well, the historic property, it would make access to a fire hydrant quite difficult. So that safety issue existed prior, and we're only going to correct it now. I guess a general comment, and that is that certainly one of the big issues that has come before council repeatedly, and that is the issue of dilapidated properties. Properties that become abandoned, become eyesores, that become fire risks, fire traps. And we've had repeated discussions with the neighbors, along with ourselves, in terms of how to address that. There are a number of similar properties throughout Bisbee that, due to their dilapidated condition, create a threat, a safety threat to neighbors. This is an attempt from the part of the city to work with an applicant here to renovate a property, to remove that threat, to remove that eyesore. And certainly, as you get into a mission like that you prehyped, there are other issues. Delay of launch, applying zoning condition, and as you know, we have repeated issues, cases coming before us in which there is disagreement among neighbors in terms of how to deal with a particular situation. Again, I commend staff in terms of moving forward on this, in terms of taking a property that was an eyesore, was dilapidated, was a fire threat to neighbors, a safety issue, and trying to convert that into a usable space, attractive, and something to buy.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Stachow.
Just a couple of things. We've always had property issues and parking issues up in Old Bisbee. And back when, it kind of concerned me. What I was saying is that in Old Bisbee, we've always had property issues and parking issues. And back when, there was always just family agreements or general agreements, if you will, for parking, and that's what most of us who are probably are used to. And unfortunately, you know, people that come in don't know this and always go by surveys. I mean, that's just the way it's done now instead of the old way. But this seems to be somewhat of a solution, and I think it's a good solution, if they agreed to it, so nobody is landlocked. But I think my question here is, did Mr. Sky apply for, and was he granted all the permits that the city requires? Mr. Stachow.
You know, I can't necessarily speak for Joe Ward. I mean, I understand that what was submitted to Mr. Ward satisfied the requirement is what my understanding is. Again, Mr. Ward is not here to certainly answer that for himself, but again, the plans that were submitted were in his eyes, which was what he needed to issue the permit, if I can answer that one.
Okay, so then all the permits were issued?
Well, the building permit, what was alluded to, I mean, clearly there was no demo permit. There was a building permit issued. I know certain other things were raised. I'm aware of a building permit being issued. I know there was not a demo permit issued, but that was explained that it wasn't considered. A demo was considered a rebuild.
Anything else, Counsel?
Mr. Snell. Mayor, from my, working with Joe, I know that as the city's building official, all of the permits that Joe was required to let, he let.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. This is going on. Well, I'm sorry, just getting...
So basically, we have amended this to, with a caveat that there is going to be an agreement worked out between Mr. Sky and that car and he, so we'll allow a little more access, so they get their car, they get their car out. For the Humphreys? For the Humphreys. Very generous of Mr. Sky. And that, the other thing was, we're going to get that done, and also the fire department will get, the public works will get that fire hydrant moved within a reasonable amount of time. It has to be...
What? I would assume so, because my motion is that it be not moved, that a new mother's hydrant be installed at their spot, they indicated the spot, prior to the certificate of occupancy issued. Meaning, before John and his family can move in, or whoever is moving in, that the hydrant gets moved.
That should be, third of days, I think, that should take long. That should be, third of days, I mean, that shouldn't take long. Okay, that's, I'm ready.
Just a short bit. Yes, sir. I think this is one of those situations where we, you know, as a council, we also have to look at our boards and commissions. I think they did their due diligence, and as representatives, I think we need to respect that.
And I could, you know, one comment, piggyback on what Mr. Luntz, Luntz said, if there was any complaint about how the board, or how the planning and zoning had voted, as far as the house was concerned, wouldn't that go to the Board of Adjustments?
Could.
Okay. And that wasn't, and there wasn't anything from the Board of Adjustments, so if there was a problem, that's what should happen, so that should become before us, as far as we're doing. Was it a problem?
I do want to mention that the planning zoning commission's decision, there was not an appeal there, but at the DRV, there was a modification that was presented to the DRV for changes to the structure, that in fact has been appealed.
Okay.
So, that will ultimately end up at the Board of Adjustments. That date hasn't been set yet, but just for the record, yes, there was an appeal to it.
Yeah, that's just the building, it hasn't...
That's the building, correct.
Thank you.
That's why I kept indicating, kind of, parking here, not the building. Ms. Carnado?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson, or Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Prochey, Dan?
Aye.
Councilmember Luntz?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Mr. Hendricks, are I moving adjourned? We have a motion, we have a second, so please signify this case as aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.